Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for joining us today on a Thursday, October 12, 2023, special business meeting. Commissioner Thomas has an excused absence. Commissioner Teal is joining us virtually and online. With that, I'll call this meeting to order. If you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Attorney Garcia, do we have certification of the agenda today?
You do. The county attorney's office has reviewed all matters on the agenda, and you have appropriate jurisdiction over them.
Okay, thank you. And do any commissioners have any disclosures for items on this agenda today?
No, sir.
And I have none either. With that, we will move on to our regular agenda item today, and we have one, which is a proclamation regarding migrant response, and we have Dan Avery presenting for staff. Hi, Dan.
Good morning, commissioners. Dan Avery for staff. As you are aware, the city of Denver recently began housing migrants at a hotel outside their jurisdiction in Adams County. That action has prompted Douglas County to review its policies and the policies of surrounding jurisdictions with regard to this topic. With that introduction, Commissioner, I will turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you so much for that. No doubt, Board of County Commissioners has been apprised of a significant issue impacting the entire Denver metro area. And of course, as a Denver native and someone who was a fifth-generation Coloradan, the fate of the entire Denver metro area is deeply significant to me. That said, we are elected to represent the near 400,000 here in Douglas County, and we know that our citizens have a perspective and a response that is appropriate to air in addition to our intent, which is to educate and inform those we represent of the current state of affairs. So with that, I will read the resolution regarding a migrant response unless we have any comments from our friend and colleague, Commissioner George Teal.
No comments at this time, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. So a resolution regarding migrant response, whereas a sanctuary city is a jurisdiction that limits cooperation with federal immigration authorities, fails to provide information about immigration status, and limits the length of immigration detainers; and whereas in 2017, Denver City Council did pass an ordinance effectively making Denver a sanctuary city by prohibiting city employees from collecting information on immigration or citizenship status, prohibiting the sharing of any other information about individuals for the purposes of immigration enforcement, and prohibiting the use of city resources for immigration enforcement; and whereas Denver did declare itself a sanctuary city at a time when the federal government was taking proactive action to secure the border and reduce the significant negative impact to American communities from illegal entry into the country; and whereas 50,000 Venezuelan migrants arrived at the southern border last month and 195,848 have arrived since last September, comprising nearly 10% of the 2 million migrants apprehended by Border Patrol in fiscal year 2023, according to data recently obtained by CBS News. Many are released to seek asylum, a process that can take years. As of October 11, 23,791 migrants had arrived in Denver for shelter and support, and over 3,068 are currently sheltered in non-city facilities like hotels. On October 1 alone, nine busloads arrived from Texas. Whereas on April 28, a 25-year-old man was kidnapped from an RTD park-and-ride in Highlands Ranch, right here in Douglas County. The Douglas County Sheriff's Office and a law enforcement agency in Rockford, Illinois arrested two Venezuelan migrants who were being held on charges of kidnapping and assault. And whereas those who enter the country illegally can pose a significant public health risk to a community when there is an increase in crime, communicable disease, and demand on public infrastructure such as roads, services, public safety, and the criminal justice system. And whereas the city and county of Denver saw an increase in its homeless population from 4,794 in 2022 to 5,818 in 2023, according to the Metro Denver Homeless Initiative's point-in-time count. And unfortunately, Denver does not have the resources or infrastructure to address the human needs it is currently facing. And whereas adding to that burden by making itself a sanctuary city and imposing that on the Denver metropolitan area is unacceptable to those we represent. And whereas those who enter the country illegally create the greatest burden on those who have entered legally, often competing for the same jobs and opportunities. And whereas Douglas County supports legal immigration into the United States. And whereas Douglas County recognizes the plight of those seeking refuge and asylum from oppressive governments in other parts of the world. And whereas Douglas County respects the history of the United States as a beacon of freedom and opportunity in the world. Whereas those who pay taxes and follow the laws of the land have been unfairly exploited and burdened by those who do not pay taxes and choose not to follow the laws of the land. And whereas the Adams County Board of Health adopted a public health order on October 10 requiring notice to the Health Department prior to shelter establishment within Adams County and establishing operational standards for such facilities. And whereas Larimer County hosted 60 migrants in December and found that, quote, "the nonprofits that work case management for migrants here are very small and their capacity is extremely limited," that the majority of migrants seek transportation outside of Larimer County, and that therefore it does not make financial or logistical sense to bus migrants into Larimer County only for our staff to arrange transportation back to Denver," end quote. And whereas Douglas County partners regionally to address homelessness and has recently committed $1.25 million in ARPA funds to support the city of Aurora's regional navigation campus because the county does not have scalable shelter services to serve large population influxes. And whereas Douglas County seeks to limit the potential for disputes about the ability for Douglas County to provide services to migrant populations. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, Colorado, that Douglas County supports citizens of Douglas County, Colorado, and the United States of America. Douglas County supports and upholds the rights of those legally in our communities and currently paying taxes to support the services that we provide to our community. And Douglas County recognizes the humanitarian plight and supports legal immigration through the proper channels of government. And Douglas County expressly affirms that the county is not a sanctuary jurisdiction and calls on the cities and counties in the Denver metropolitan area, including the city and county of Denver and the new Denver mayor, to publicly do the same. And Douglas County supports the Sheriff's Office to uphold the law, federal immigration policy, and to protect and preserve public safety in our community. And Douglas County calls on the Board of Health to examine the impacts of recent immigration to Denver and issue proactive and responsive public health orders regarding the same. And Douglas County encourages willing and interested county residents to volunteer, donate essential items, or contribute to the newcomer fund, which supports nonprofit and government organizations who are providing necessary services to the incoming migrant population arriving in Colorado, including food, clothing, and medical needs, emergency shelter, employment opportunities, and wraparound support. So with that, I will open it up for any comments or discussion from the board.
Thank you, Chair. I think this is an appropriate resolution to take at this time. We know that Denver is struggling with what they call unwanted migrants that are being brought into the city, but we also know that this is their own making. This is a crisis of their own making. By taking the hard stance to rebuff the federal government several years ago, the word got out, and migrants are traveling in from Venezuela and throughout the world with the knowledge that Denver is a sanctuary. Denver will take them in. And so I definitely speak in favor of adoption of this resolution, in particularly where it calls upon the Denver mayor and the city council to actually reverse their prior proclamation of being a sanctuary city because they are now feeling the consequences of that ill-advised, if politically correct, decision several years ago. I speak in favor of the resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. I'll just add that I appreciate the hard work and dedication of my county commissioner colleagues throughout the Denver metro area in their dedicated efforts to address the humanitarian crisis and the issues that are occurring throughout the Denver metro region. I'm a fifth-generation Coloradan. I was born in Denver. I'm a Denver native, was born at Rose Medical, and as far as I've been told, I'm the first Latino commissioner elected in Douglas County. I do recognize the plight of those that are facing the challenges that we seek today. That said, you know, part of my studies in my undergraduate work was a thesis called "The Economic Impact of Mexican Immigration on the Politics of Southern California." And in that work with the professors that I was studying with, one of the biggest challenges are for those that are currently legally operating within the United States. They are competing for the same jobs with those that choose not to enter through the proper legal channels. So I want to ensure that we are looking out for those that are playing by the rules and also ensure that we are focused on the public safety of our community. I know that, again, those nearly 400,000 that we represent are counting on elected officials in this community to take a stand and ensure that their rights are protected, and we will do that, I hope, today. So with that, let me open it up for any questions or comments. Is there any citizen comment in the room or online? And we are pleased and honored to have with us the distinguished mayor from a Douglas County jurisdiction that we know well, Parker. Welcome, Mayor Toborg.
Great. Thank you, Chairman. Commissioner Teal, I just want to say Jeff Toborg, mayor of the town of Parker, want to thank and applaud the Board of County Commissioners for taking on this initiative and taking on this proclamation. You know, Douglas County, Parker, we're a caring community. We care. We have compassion. We give to causes. I don't want to label illegal immigrants as all criminals, legal immigrants as all criminals. Natural-born citizens are criminals and non-criminals alike. But you know, if we're a nation without borders, that doesn't mean we have to be a county without borders. And so I applaud this. You know, the plight, we had the sheriff and the chief of police of Parker out speaking last week on the status of crime in Parker. You know, it's rising. It's we're having car thefts. We're having drugs running. It's not a pretty picture. So to the degree that we can, you know, implore Mayor Johnson, and again, as a fellow mayor, I'm not going to ask him how to run his town. He's not going to ask me how to run my town. But if we can implore upon him the fact that, you know, this is an issue of your predecessors' making, and we have no ability, we have no infrastructure, we have no way to help you in this, but we can show you the way we do it down here through legal immigration, through, you know, compassionate service. And I would call upon all Douglas County citizens to find out how they can give effectively to established, well-reputed organizations to aid in this crisis if they so choose. But you know, we need to protect our homeland. We need to protect Douglas County, and I certainly have a responsibility to protect Parker. So again, I applaud you both for this outstanding resolution and appreciate your time. Thank you.
Mayor, we know you're an incredibly busy individual, and we really thank you for coming to represent Parker and being here with us. In Douglas County, we greatly benefit from the partnership that we have with the mayors throughout the county, and you are certainly one. So your fortitude and your leadership are well-respected. Couldn't agree more. And for us, we want to always respect the work of those that labor on behalf of citizens, and that includes the new mayor of Denver. I'm looking forward to a positive and collaborative working relationship with the mayor of Denver. And our hope today is that he joins all of us in ensuring that the Denver metro region remains safe. So thank you for that. Any additional citizen comment? Any additional citizen comment? Troy, do we have any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I will close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Please, the board, I do have a resolution. I do have a motion to adopt a resolution regarding migrant response.
And I will second that motion in Commissioner Thomas's absence. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
And that passes 2-0. Thank you very much, everyone, for joining us. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Okay, let me know when you're ready. Well, good day, everybody. My name is Abe Layton. I'm chairman of the Board of Douglas County Commissioners, and I am really pleased and honored to be joined today by one of our distinguished mayors in Douglas County, the Honorable Jeff Toborg, as well as the head of our new local Douglas County Health Department, Mike Hill. Today, we're coming with compassion and awareness around the migrant issue facing the Denver metro area, but deeply cognizant that the citizens we represent expect us to be very protective of their public safety and ensure that we are honoring their rights as citizens in our community. We did pass a resolution today, and I will read that. It was a resolution regarding migrant response. We stated, whereas a sanctuary city is a jurisdiction that limits cooperation with federal immigration authorities, fails to provide information about immigration status, and limits the length of immigration detainers; and whereas in 2017, Denver City Council passed an ordinance effectively making Denver a sanctuary city by prohibiting city employees from collecting information on immigration or citizenship status, prohibiting the sharing of any other information about individuals for the purposes of immigration enforcement, and prohibiting the use of city resources for immigration enforcement. And whereas Denver declared itself a sanctuary city at a time when the federal government was taking proactive action to secure the border and reduce the significant negative impact to American communities from illegal entry into the country. And whereas 50,000 Venezuelan migrants arrived at the southern border last month and 195,848 have arrived since last September, comprising nearly 10% of the 2 million migrants apprehended by Border Patrol in fiscal year 2023, according to data recently obtained by CBS News. Many are released to seek asylum, a process that can take years. As of October 11, 23,791 migrants had arrived in Denver for shelter and support, and over 3,068 are currently sheltered in non-city facilities like hotels. On October 1 alone, nine busloads arrived from Texas. Whereas on April 28, the 25-year-old man was kidnapped from an RTD park-and-ride in Highlands Ranch. The Douglas County Sheriff's Office and a law enforcement agency in Rockford, Illinois arrested two Venezuelan migrants who are being held on charges of kidnapping and assault. And whereas those who enter the country illegally can pose a significant public health risk to a community where there is an increase in crime, communicable disease, and demand on public infrastructure such as roads, services, public safety, and the criminal justice system. And whereas the city and county of Denver saw an increase in its homeless population from 4,794 in 2022 to 5,818 in 2023, according to the Metro Denver Homeless Initiative's point-in-time count, and does not have the resources or infrastructure to address the human needs that it is currently facing. And whereas adding to that burden by making itself a sanctuary city and imposing that on the Denver metropolitan area is unacceptable to those we represent. And whereas those who enter the country illegally create the greatest burden on those who have entered legally, often competing for the same jobs and opportunities. And whereas Douglas County supports legal immigration into the United States. And whereas Douglas County recognizes the plight of those seeking refuge and asylum from oppressive governments in other parts of the world. And whereas Douglas County respects the history of the United States as a beacon of freedom and opportunity in the world. Whereas those who pay taxes and follow the laws of the land have been unfairly exploited and burdened by those who do not pay taxes and choose not to follow the laws of the land. And whereas the Adams County Board of Health adopted a public health order on October 10 requiring notice to the Health Department prior to shelter establishment within Adams County and establishing operational standards for such facilities. And whereas Larimer County hosted 60 migrants in December and found that, quote, "the nonprofits that work case management for migrants here are very small and their capacity is extremely limited," that the majority of migrants seek transportation outside of Larimer County, and that therefore it does not make financial or logistical sense to bus migrants into Larimer County only for our staff to arrange transportation back to Denver. And whereas Douglas County partners regionally to address homelessness and has recently committed $1.25 million in ARPA funds to support the city of Aurora's regional navigation campus because the county does not have scalable shelter services to serve large population influxes. And whereas Douglas County seeks to limit the potential for disputes about the ability for Douglas County to provide services to migrant populations. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, Colorado, that Douglas County supports citizens of Douglas County, Colorado, and the United States of America. Douglas County supports and upholds the rights of those legally in our communities and currently paying taxes to support the services we provide to our community. And Douglas County recognizes the humanitarian plight and supports legal immigration through the proper channels of government. And Douglas County expressly affirms that the county is not a sanctuary jurisdiction and calls on the cities and counties in the Denver metropolitan area, including the city and county of Denver and the new mayor of Denver, to publicly do the same. Douglas County supports the Sheriff's Office to uphold the law, federal immigration policy, and to protect and preserve public safety in our community. And Douglas County calls on the Board of Health to examine the impacts of recent immigration to Denver and issue proactive and responsive public health orders regarding the same. And finally, Douglas County encourages willing and interested county residents to volunteer, donate essential items, or contribute to the newcomer fund, which supports nonprofit and government organizations who are providing necessary services to the incoming migrant population arriving in Colorado, including food, clothing, and medical needs, emergency shelter, employment opportunities, and wraparound support. And that was adopted and passed today in 2023 in Castle Rock, Colorado. We're really pleased and honored to have the support of our board behind this resolution. Commissioner Teal joined us earlier, and again, we respect and honor the rights of our citizens to continue to be proactive about public safety and the humanitarian crisis facing those in our region. And I'll invite Commissioner, Mayor Toborg, to make any comments.
Mayor Jeff Toborg from the town of Parker. I just want to congratulate and thank the Douglas County Commissioners for this brave action and for taking a stand for all of Douglas County. You know, as I said in my testimony, it's not about your legal or illegal immigration status. It's about crime. It's about protecting, for me, Parker, for the rest of us, it's about protecting Douglas County as a whole. In an overtaxed police force, in an overtaxed law enforcement area, you know, we need to take every step measurable to do this. And while I would never, as a mayor, I would never call upon another mayor to take an action, I would ask Mayor Johnson in Denver, though, to take a hard look at their policies and look at what it's doing to the region, look at what it's doing to their town, and what he's inherited, and to take swift action to correct that. So again, my thanks and appreciation to the county commissioners for this brave and expedient action, and I expect other commissions around the state and other municipalities to probably follow suit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Toborg. We appreciate that. And as I shared earlier, we deeply benefit in Douglas County from a phenomenal partnership with our mayors in our local municipalities here, and they have done a phenomenal job as well at keeping our county safe. Again, I'd like to introduce Mike Hill from our Health Department.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mike Hill, Executive Director of the Board of Health of Douglas County. We're concerned for our citizens certainly foremost, but also for the health of the migrants. Our main concern with this thing that's going on in Denver is that they've been sending people to Adams County without any identification or prior knowledge that they're coming. So Adams County's not been aware of any health problems that might be coming into their community. And I'm going to try and work with the Board of Health to make sure that we're proactive in making sure that we know before any potential health issues are sent to our county. Also, since we don't have a lot of experience in this county with sheltering this type of population, I want to make sure we inform any place, any hotels, or other areas that might house migrants of the potential health issues and how to respond to them. So we want to make, excuse me, make sure everyone is healthy in Douglas County and in the Denver metro area.
Thank you, Mike, for that. And again, we benefit here in Douglas County from having our own local Douglas County Health Department, and it would not be as robust if it weren't for the incredible expertise and leadership of Mike Hill. We greatly appreciate that. So with that, I would open it up for any questions in the room or online, if there are any, any questions.
Yes. Eddie with, his name's Eddie Castro with Channel 4. Have you contacted the mayor of Denver yet about this?
Yes. So did reach out directly to the mayor of Denver, and our staff has actively been working with his staff. I'm a Denver native, so I look forward and appreciate the opportunity to work well with those that are serving in Denver, especially the new mayor. We did not hear back from the mayor of Denver, but certainly welcome ongoing conversation around this issue.
So what do you think, what do you hope happens next now?
Well, again, because Douglas County is in the Denver metro region, we're part of this region, it would be unreasonable for us to believe, or for our citizens to believe that 23,000 migrants from Venezuela would not have a direct public health, economic, and public safety impact on the entire area. We have been told from our commissioner colleagues throughout the region that Denver is stating it is not a sanctuary city, but we do know that from 2017 and the resolution that they passed, there certainly are a lot of elements to what was passed that would make it appear they are a sanctuary city. But if in fact they are not, we support that. We are not a sanctuary county in Douglas County, although we understand the humanitarian plight, and we would call on the mayor of Denver and the city and county of Denver, their council, to be very public about the fact that we are not, that they are not a sanctuary city.
Is Denver bringing migrants down here? Do you have migrants here right now?
When you say here, you mean Denver metro area and Douglas County. So as I shared with you, we just, you know, had to deal with a pretty significant kidnapping in Highlands Ranch as a result of Venezuelan migrants that are currently in custody. So that's significant to us from a law enforcement standpoint, from a public safety standpoint. We want to be very proactive here and ensure that we are addressing the needs of our community wisely.
Anything else that I should be asking, that you'd like to say?
You know, my job is to work for the people. You know, I work for the citizens, not the other way around. So I want to be sure that I'm always being responsive to those that I serve, and I know Mayor Toborg shares that view for those he represents in Parker. Our citizens, they pay taxes, they go to work, they pay their bills, they care for their families, and they want to make sure that their elected officials are taking a stand for their safety, and will continue to do that. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate the additional time.
Commissioner Layton, this is Troy.
Yes, Troy.
We do have Ellis Arnold online. I'll go ahead and unmute her question.
Sure.
Go ahead, Ellis.
Hi, Ellis.
Hey, Commissioner Layton. Hey, everybody. Thank you for taking our questions. I appreciate that. Let me know if any of my words don't come through. Can you talk a little bit more about the 28th kidnapping you were referring to? Like, how were the, and were the alleged perpetrators confirmed to have been migrants, specifically from Venezuela, who had arrived in the city of Denver before allegedly committed a crime in Highlands Ranch?
Absolutely. And Ellis, thank you for joining us. Always appreciate your engagement with Douglas County. Specifically, on April 28, a 25-year-old man was kidnapped from an RTD park-and-ride in Highlands Ranch, so right here in Douglas County. The Douglas County Sheriff's Office and a law enforcement agency in Rockford, Illinois arrested two Venezuelan migrants who are currently being held on charges of kidnapping and assault.
Ellis, you're still unmuted. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. So, you know, obviously, we talked about, you know, a crime here. Has the county, has
resource team, a navigator paired with law enforcement that is proactively engaging with those that are unhoused to either provide services or address other issues as they arrive, as they arise. Unfortunately, even though we have partnered in the Denver metro region, as we stated earlier, Denver saw an increase in its homeless population in one year from 4,794 in 2022 to 5,818 in 2023. Again, being only one of two counties, we know that throughout the Denver metro region, we're continuing to see an increased burden on our human services infrastructure and the inability of many in the area to be able to address this in a way that reduces that point in time. We want to be a good partner. We're really pleased with our co-response model, and we'd like to see that carried out throughout the metro area. But until we see that point in time reduced in the entire Denver metro area, inviting 23,000 new individuals to our community that may potentially be unhoused and in need of additional services is not acceptable. It's unwise, and it's not appropriate for us to be doing it this time.
Okay. Let me see here. You know, you mentioned, Commissioner, you mentioned Douglas County supporting people immigrating through legal means. This is a two-part question. My impression is that people seeking asylum are going through a legal process. Is that the county's understanding as well? And what would you say to migrants who feel they aren't able to enter the country through typical legal, non-asylum immigration means?
Well, again, I think the infrastructure of our local communities are incredibly taxed already, and the citizens that are currently legally here, paying taxes, caring for their families, and providing the resources for us to care for the human needs in our community are asking us to take a stand to ensure that we are being fiscally responsible and protecting their safety and their well-being. I'm a fifth-generation Coloradan. I'm the first Latino ever-elected commissioner in Douglas County. I do recognize the plight of those that are seeking asylum and certainly those in the Latino community in particular. That said, I always want to be responsible and responsive to every taxpayer dollar that comes into our community. And as we know, the resources simply aren't there to care for the unhoused that are already in the Denver metro area. So our goal is to continue to get our point in time as close to zero as possible so that everyone is housed or has services or their needs have been met. But until we get to that time, it is not wise or appropriate to invite 23,000 new people to our community without the resources to support them.
Thank you. And just a couple other questions here, if you guys have time. Commissioner, you mentioned, I believe, studying the impact of illegal immigration on people competing for jobs in California. Were you saying that illegal immigration makes it more difficult for low-Mexican immigrants in California to compete for jobs or for everyone to compete for jobs? I ask because the types of jobs illegal immigrants pursue are, you know, obviously typically limited to low-wage jobs. Do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I do, and I'll reiterate. You know, my thesis was studying the economic impact of Mexican immigration on the politics of Southern California and, you know, worked with professors when I was getting my undergraduate degree in that. But I'm certainly not proclaiming to be an immigration authority. But the research has certainly borne out that those that enter in a way that is not through proper channels, they are competing for the same jobs as those that have recently entered legally and have pursued the proper channels of government. And so oftentimes, and not in all cases, but in many circumstances, those same positions are being competed for, and those that have done it the right way by following the law are being outcompeted, and their livelihoods and their families are being impacted. So again, we want to honor those that have made a point to use the proper channels of government, that are paying taxes, that are working to serve our community in the right way. Those that wish to commit crimes or take advantage of our system simply are impacting those who are doing it the right way the most. And I'm not asserting on any level that all those who enter illegally are going to commit crimes, but we know the research has borne out that there certainly is a public safety impact from illegal immigration into the country.
Thank you. Hopefully, last question here. You know, and this is touched on a little bit by the resolution. I was told that this action today by the Douglas Commissioners was spurred by the fact that Denver had sent migrants recently to a location in Adams County and that Adams County officials were caught off guard by that. Am I understanding that correctly, and can you shed any more light on what happened there and when that occurred?
I can. And I don't want to speak for another county or their board, but we certainly were apprised in Douglas County that Denver made use of an Adams County facility to house recent Venezuelan migrants to the Denver metro area. As a result of that action, I do know that several conversations occurred and that the Adams County Board of Health did adopt a public health order on October 10th requiring notice to the Health Department prior to shelter establishment within Adams County, and then also establishing operational standards for those facilities. So that was October 10th.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks, Ellis, for being with us. Thanks so much. If that's it, we'll call it a day. Thank you.